Call meeting to order at six oh five. Um, and I'll open a public session for thirty minutes now. Oh my god, my computer's gonna die. Yeah, um. So. For, yeah, minute approval of minutes from our November meeting.
I didn't have any comments.
Okay. You're good. Um, so this is what I need, I'm gonna flop on my phone. Um, so I can make a motion to approve the minutes from November school board meeting?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Alright.
Alright, what's next?
Committee reports.
Oh yeah, committee reports, um, I'll, yeah, do you wanna start with policies?
For once, I don't have like twenty pages.
Okay, what? Are you guys working through?
Yeah, so we, in the last meeting, we talked about a joint board policy manual, which as of right now has about thirteen relevant policies that are included within it. Um, yeah, the minutes, public input, suspension of policies, like just a comprehensive packet that should be organized and presented at the joint board level. Um, minor tweaks throughout, just to conform and make sure that it's like relevant to the, to the board or the, the joint board.
Okay.
Uh, but there's gonna be a meeting tomorrow where we take a look at that and finalize it and then bring it to the next, uh, joint board meeting.
Okay.
For approval.
Okay.
Um, and then.
Which is in January, I think, right?
Uh, yeah. And then in, as part of the meeting tomorrow, there's gonna be a couple of other policy reviews and then I think there's going to be a few that we'll probably recommend removing.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, very light update this time for me.
Okay, that's good. Um, so nothing, there's nothing to.
Nothing to vote on, yeah, nothing to vote on, nothing, yeah.
Okay. Um, safety and security is next, we have not met, um, I think we meet again in Jan-, I think it's January, is it January?
Yeah, typically.
Okay, um, the superintendent evaluation.
Oh, yep, um, we, we tomorrow, we're just continuing to review the evaluation methods to come up with the best one, it's all gonna happen, you know, in the second half of the year.
Okay.
There'll be more updates then.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, not too much.
And you, the Kensington School.
School study, we're kind of on a hiatus.
Okay, that's what I thought, alright, um, general correspondence, we do have one.
Yep.
Yep, so we got the one that I'll explain then Becky has, and the second one that came in, so you didn't see this one, but.
Oh, okay, this is the one we saw?
Yep, so shared that with you, Attorney General has filed a class action suit, uh, and he's naming, um, you know, uh, various school districts that could be affected, so you really don't have to do anything, um, with that. The, um, rationale is for the PFAAs, which are the long-lasting foams that can be in water and that discovering, um, that obviously could be harmful by drinking it and, um, so we don't have any large, um, uh, concerns here, cause it gets tested all over testing sites, okay? However, they, they filed on behalf, so I did, because this affected a couple of other districts that I also work with, so we called the attorney's office to say, what do we do? What would you recommend to a board? And they're like, you really don't have to do anything, if you say you don't wanna be part of this, you can remove yourself, however, if a settlement does come down, then you'd be entitled to no money, you know? But we're not paying anything for the legal fees, it's done by the attorney general's office, we're just named because of the different towns and where they also found the chemicals in those towns, um, so we, basically, it's just staying informed and the attorney general's office will let you know as they continue through the process.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
Sounds good.
So we'll put that into the minutes so that people can see that letter as well.
Okay, oh, okay, perfect, yeah.
And then Ms. Rule also got another correspondence, that she wants to highlight.
Um, this one, I think that will ask to go into non-public to discuss, um, this came with our, from the Homeland Security when we had our, um, safety audit, um, done, so when they gave us their list of recommendations, that was the letter that was attached, but, um, we thought that going to non-public to discuss specific safety recommendations was probably best.
Okay. Oh, yeah, sure, that makes sense.
Yes.
Sorry, I just wanted to remember.
I'll take, I'll take the original.
Oh, okay, is that the original?
I'll take this one and then.
Okay, I was gonna say, this looks like the original to me.
I'll take that original.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so we will go into non-public at the end of this.
At the end of the meeting, under I.
Under I, okay. Um, oh yeah, the communication and community engagement.
Yep, um, we met on December sixth and the survey is all completed, the link is gonna go home on a, um, a flyer to all of the, um, elementary school kids in their folders.
Okay.
Like middle school and high school, it's gonna go in an email, and it's also gonna go in an email, it's gonna be everywhere, it's the idea, posted, um, like in the schools, the idea is for, like, literally all of the, um, all of the stakeholders to, to do it, so.
Okay.
Parents, students, if they're old enough, obviously, um, community members who don't have kids, really anyone in the, in the, um, in the SAU should, can take it. Um, and the, it's about, I've said this before, but it's about how the SAU communicates and sort of the impression that people have of the SAU and what we can do better and.
Okay.
So, um, so the link is, it's, the survey is live now and we're gonna start pushing it out after Christmas, like in January, and so it'll be about a month when it's sort of, we're trying to get the word out there.
Okay, good.
And that's pretty much it, um, I, I think I said last month, we didn't, we couldn't put it in our town newsletter because of the timing, but we could post it in Facebook, um, and I'll send it to you because I signed myself out of my Facebook and can never get back into it. I don't know, it's, yeah, it's the blessing, so I'll send that to you.
Yes, absolutely, I will post on our very active Kensington Connects.
Yeah, Kensington Connects, and also like the, the town, or the school Facebook group, I think.
Oh.
One, maybe?
Do we?
I don't know.
The PTO has a Facebook.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so, um, maybe there's a, yeah, a couple, people we can send it to to post, so it, it, um, shows up.
Okay.
Cause I know, if, if like a moderator, moderator.
I wonder if they can put it on, we have a town website.
That's true.
I wonder if we could put it on the town of Kensington website?
Cause it's, yeah, it's, it's just a link, so it's, it wouldn't.
Okay.
Okay, I'll, I'll email, um, who would I email about that?
Like the town clerk? I wonder who's in the.
Sarah Wigan.
Okay, alright, that's a great idea. And then, um, any, like, it's gonna be posted at the library.
Okay.
There's a flyer, so I could put it up at the farm, but if there's any other places you, I mean, we don't have very many common places in our adorable little town, but if you can think of anything else.
The only other thing, oh, no, but it, it's not Kensington specific, so even if they see it at like the Y in Exeter or something like that, okay.
It's definitely gonna be, yeah, it's definitely gonna be Oliver.
Yeah, that would be more what I would think of as other bigger resources.
But we're kind of like, each person from the committee is sort of doing their town.
Okay, yeah, so I think you've done your due diligence with that.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't have a lot of.
No.
Okay.
We're teeny tiny, um, alright, that's.
Yeah, so we're gonna do that in January and it goes through the January thirtieth, so it's a quick, it's like less than five minute survey and so.
Okay.
Okay, that was that.
Um, community news submission, I don't think there's been another one since our last meeting, I think I know now, I think I'm on that list now.
I think so.
Okay.
I think the next one doesn't go out until February maybe?
Okay, so I'll know when that comes in, I will be on it, I promise. Okay, so that's all our committees, um, business and financials, we can.
Can we postpone that till Molly?
Molly, yes, that's what, yep, yep, I thought I heard her come in, but, um, principals report.
Um, yep, we have a couple things, um, first was the student academic diagnostics, I think what I was showing, I'm sorry, it's not as pretty as normally as I'd like these, as I couldn't quite get the full screen to print, um, this is our SAS data, so from the spring, so this is kinda old, um, in the sense that it's from June, but they don't release them officially until I think it was November that it got released publicly. Um, so this shows both, um, our math, ELA, and science, um, and this is, um, students in third, fourth, and fifth grade that take this, the state test, our younger students do not participate in state testing, so this is just our older students, um, and it's a, it's combined for all three grade levels is the, um, school-wide data that, that this is showing.
Okay.
Um, so I mean, it's kinda straightforward as far as different proficiency levels, um, the red is considered level one, yellow is level two, level three is in green, and level four is in blue.
Level four, like.
Is that good?
The highest, so, yeah, so level four is, yeah, so level four is the highest.
Same question.
Three and two and then one, yes.
Okay, so you want blue, is what you want?
So you want blue and green, yeah, blue and green is considered proficient.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So I think, I think in our brain, our brains are always like, red is bad, right?
Yes, that's why, yeah.
Unfortunately, isn't it, we're trained to think that way.
Correct.
How do I count?
It's interesting.
So, only fifth grade.
As long as you have five kids.
Oh, I don't know why that.
Yeah. We need to check that with the state, cause all of our kids took it.
Um, actually.
Do you have it up there right now, right?
I do, let me just look, cause that's.
Just looking at the science, cause it's five, which would be five kids, it's only fifth grade that takes the science?
Yeah, it is only fifth grade, but, and everybody did take it, so that is, oh.
There's definitely more than, I know we're small, but there's more than five kids.
Yeah, no, we definitely, alright, so that's interesting why that's reported in that way, so I'm gonna have to check on that one, cause that's not, clearly not accurate. I was, so we originally, Chris and I tried to go on, they're now, um, New Hampshire's now reporting on this platform, which is called iplatform, um, except you can't put anything into a PDF on here.
Helpful, great, great.
So I could send you the link to get on here and passwords, but I can't put anything in a PDF there, so this was actually trying to print off of the direct testing site, um, I apologize, I don't know why that doesn't have all of our kids.
And Becky, not that you need to, to give this to us, but is there, does this testing allow us to look at like us in comparison to like the state or the, even the district? Or is it just like a, this is how you are doing?
Yeah, so this site is actually much better, um, in the sense that it, it gives you more of like what your target is and then whether you exceeded your target, and some of this is also based on, again, like state averages and that sort of thing, um, do you have, you still have it up?
Yep, I'm pulling it up, assessment levels.
Or actually, the proficiency and growth is the one that I think shows the better, I think that those show more, um, yeah, and so what we, you can also do when you have, um, it will allow you to show like the same cohort of students over time, so like, this is where they were as third graders and then this is how they were as fourth graders, and then this is how they were as fifth graders, it's a little wonky just because we have two years of COVID boxes in here to be able.
Oh.
To not track or not track, um, you don't have a touchscreen?
No.
Um, so yes, you can, um, this, this, this platform allows us to get into that comparison kind of thing that you were talking about, um, over time and then compared to averages.
The state averages or whatever, does that, is, is what I'm looking at also show you like where in the red you are, like, like?
It give you an overall score.
Okay, just looks like more of a fluid, not, I mean, that's, I'm just a statistics nerd, so I'm like, tell me where. It's not, we don't need to know that.
So again, it's one, um, you know, what indicator, I, so I think I shared at the beginning, there are iReady data that we do three times a year, um, we track that a little bit more closely, just because it's a little more real time, this, they take in June and then we get it in November, so it's a little less timely.
And is this once a year?
It's, this is just once a year.
Okay.
Yeah, um.
And what does the state do with this, Becky, like, I see that you can look at the data, but what is, what does that mean for the state's purposes?
The, so they will look at it and if schools are not making adequate growth, you become a school or target school, a CSI school, and they'll make recommendations, give you resources, which typically is money and training, because they attribute it back to your instructional practices.
Okay.
And you have to get off that list within usually three years, so there's a time component to it, so that's how they look at it, um, to see that, one, all kids are being tested.
Yep.
And, cause there's also participation that goes into here, um, and if you do not have a, a adequate participation, e- each kid under ninety-five percent of participation counts as a zero in your score, so there's a huge impact in that way as well.
Got it.
Uh, but they're looking at growth and growth comparison, um, at the state.
Got it, okay.
We don't generally have issues with participation rates here in Kensington, I know that's an issue in other schools, but we don't.
It's usually good till middle school, elementary schools' participation is really good, usually, typically.
Okay.
Um, but we do look at, we do look at this alongside the iReady data, so if students scoring poor in multiple places, then, you know, we'll take a look at what's happening.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we did make a huge shift in our literacy this past year, um, all of our teachers have been trained in the Orton Gillingham program now, which has been a very large shift in our, in our, mostly in our primary grades, um, um, and so we're hoping to see some, you know, positive results of that, but that was a really big shift for us this year in literacy. I'll try to make this look prettier for next time.
No, no, this is great, this is really fun.
There's always lots of data available.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then the other part of my principals' report. Um, I just was, I had highlighted, um, our Veterans Day ceremony that we had, um, a few weeks ago in November, um, the kids did a great job, um, I heard from a few veterans since then, cause I was unfortunately not able to make it to the ceremony this year, um, and heard very positive things from our veterans that, that attended, so very proud of our kids for carrying on that week, and we had a lot of staff members out that week, so it really did fall on the kids to like keep the show going, so proud of them. Um, we have a few other, um, events coming up that we're trying to be very mindful of inviting our seniors into the school, um, because it's an important piece of our community that we wanna make sure that we stay connected with, so we actually have senior joy tomorrow, so we have invited seniors and grandparents and that sort of thing in, um, for some holiday joy tomorrow, and then, um, inviting them also to our winter concert, which will be right after the new year, um, that week we get back, I think, the ninth, tenth?
Ninth.
Yep, um, and then also inviting, um, seniors to our bingo night in January as well, so we're just really trying to make sure that the events that we're having here at school are open to more than just our families.
Nice, bringing in the ringers for bingo, I see. Show these kids what's up.
Well, especially, yeah, cause you know, we don't have it at the, at the, um, hall anymore, yeah, so we've gotta, we might need to think about doing that more often.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so for meaningful learning, I just, I highlighted the bits and box store from our fifth graders, um, I'm not sure if anyone was able to attend the holiday market on the PTO, but the fifth graders had their own store set up.
Sure did.
Which they had worked on for a long time, um, the school smelled really good of pumpkin bread and ginger cookies for days prior to the market, um, and they really took on this store from a full, like, economics unit and standards and did a full analysis of how much does these things cost and time and labor and profit and, um, all of that, so they did end up with eight hundred and forty dollars at the end of their sales, some of that was straight donations, but, um, uh, they did, um, they did come away with that and they are now discussing, you know, then how to best spend that money, they do have Snoopy, their hamster.
Oh.
That they have some expenses for, so they are planning to use some of the eight hundred and forty dollars for Snoopy, Snoopy's needs, um, but then the rest they'll talk about, um, they really wanna do another community-based project and put the money back into a community project, so.
Hmm, cool.
So, but again, like meaningful learning, that's what it's all about.
Yes.
Um, and then, on, under health and wellbeing, I was just highlighting, um, Mrs. Plard's Taste it Tuesdays, something she started years ago, kinda went away during COVID for a few years, and it's, it's back, really by the, um, request of the kids, because they look forward to trying it every week, and, and some weeks they like it, and some weeks they don't, but her goal is really to expose them to different, it's mostly vegetables, sometimes fruits, but mostly vegetables that they probably choose not to eat at home when offered, but it's amazing that when you see a hundred other kids trying it, that a lot of kids will actually try it, um, so, and then they get to vote, um, thumbs up, thumbs down, and then if they vote yes, she puts it on the menu at some point in the, in the coming months, so they can see it again if they vote for it.
Cool.
Um, the sour cranberries were a big hit.
Yes, I heard about those.
I think she was calling them gummy cranberries.
Oh, smart.
Sour patch cranberries.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Yes.
Good marketing.
It is all about marketing, really, yeah, um, and so they voted yes, and so we're gonna have sour cranberries.
Is this like a collective group vote in front of the KF, is that how it works?
Yeah, so she'll come around with like little taster cups and offer, I mean, no one's forced to take it if they don't want, but generally, I'd say ninety-five percent of kids will take a little taster cup and do a little taste and they'll say, no thank you, or, you know?
Okay.
Um, and then she'll do a thumbs up or thumbs down and, and, but we used to do the whole ballot and the thing and that just was, that was, that was unnecessary, so thumbs up and thumbs down works also, um, but yeah, no, we've actually had parents email and say, can you tell me the cauliflower recipe, because my kid wants to eat the cauliflower now, so.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, so just kind of trying to get them to expand, you know, they, I, I'm not sure she's figured out how to cook kale yet in a way that they love it, but she's working on it.
So good luck, yeah. Tell me that.
She's working on it, it's so good for you and she's really trying hard, so, yeah.
Great.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, and bounce back to business and financials?
Alright, sorry, I was late.
No, no, you're fine. Wait, how's that different than any other week?
Well, this is from Tesco site, this is from Time, this is from iPod.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't have.
So you guys had a current year financial in the board, so we do add, just shy of seventy thousand dollars from the last, either in actual, in conferences, um, some of it, some of, a lot of it is special education, um, we had some student body activities encumbered, so we realized like, I don't know, but when encumbered, we know we're gonna be doing that later in the year, so we encumbered that, um, insurance and benefits, that was us, uh, estimating an employee might choose to take it, um, later in the year.
Yeah.
Um, and then we did the crowdfunding, so here we do a fifty thousand crowdfunding for the year. Do you guys have any questions? All pretty standard stuff.
Mm-hmm.
And then, the other thing is the budget, so I'll give you guys a copy, my little nice pie chart for you. From the last time we met, so I met with Becky, so I'll let Becky, I'll tell her what she took out, so, uh, the last time we did talk about the budget was the, Chris, do you have a copy here?
Hope I got one of them pulled up, thank you.
And then, we met to, to see where we could reduce it, so the biggest area that came out is special transportation. And I don't know if you want to talk about that.
Yeah, it's just a change in student need, really, um, as far as who's using, um, special education transportation, so we had a, a reduction, um, in those students who are using that, so, um, it, it, it took a nice chunk of change out of, on the proposed budget for next year, so.
Yes, well, we met in November, we had flat funded it from the current year.
Okay.
Um, so I believe it was at seventy-five thousand, and we, we took out that, pretty much that makes up the entire reduction, others were not, as a question.
And that's contracted service, that's what that one is?
Nope, it's, um, it's in the twenty-seven hundred section, so if you go down, it should be on page six, under.
I was looking at the, the, something like the.
Is it on the pie chart page at all?
Oh, it's under transportation.
Okay.
So contracted service, um, that was the shift from, um, we had a couple of things under there, that, um, the last two years, we had, um, entered into an agreement with the Brettwood preschool, and we were paying for, um, forty percent of the preschool teacher's salary because we had, um, nine students placed over there, so we were paying a portion of, of her salary, those students are all here with us now, so, um, so we no longer had, and then there was also, we had been contracting, um, with a nursing service, I believe, that had been what was part of in there too, and then we shifted some staffing for that as well.
Okay.
So the special transportation, we have, um, a two-point-nine-five percent increase for first student, but that's offset by a thirty-five thousand dollar decrease that we made since the last meeting on special transportation, so that's why, um, the transportation line, it shows a decrease of thirty-one thousand, because you have the decrease of thirty-five, but a slight offset of the increase for first.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So remember last year how we went through and, and we determined there was like thirty thousand dollars of sort of discretionary, sort of we could touch this or not?
Mm-hmm.
I already went through and touched all, and pulled from that discretionary, like, down to the bit, like.
Okay.
As low as I could possibly get it, so that's the last meeting that Molly and I had, was taking like two thousand here and three thousand there, you know, those little.
So we pretty much made a wash, cause some things we actually increased and some things we decreased, and then the real decrease was the special transportation.
Okay.
So we went line by line, really, just making sure we were as accurate as we could project it.
And every time I went the wrong direction, Becky's like, it's not the way we wanna go.
Yeah, okay, and that was based on, this, special transportation was based on utilization?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So you'll see the actuals from last year in the budget, so, um, on the rows before it, it shows, which I had columns before.
Yes.
It shows the actuals from the prior years.
Okay.
So you have, you actually have FY twenty-one actuals and FY twenty-two actuals here, so the FY, the FY twenty-one, twenty-two, so it's, well, it's FY twenty-two, but it's twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we spent sixty-nine thousand in the twenty-two, twenty-three year, which was last year, we spent thirty-three thousand, and I'm assuming the sixty-nine is a student that's no longer in the district.
Okay.
So it would've been the twenty-one, twenty-two year, I'm not sure, the student.
Yeah, yeah, right, right, yeah, you don't need to say anymore, it's more about like who's using the service and why, yeah, exactly, that makes sense.
And we talked about, we don't have radar for kindergarten and, I don't think.
It's best, best we know in our crystal wall.
That would re- require a special transportation, okay.
At this point, yeah, that we know.
Great. That's why we have those stress marks. Um, the building and maintenance went down quite a bit too, is that just because we've, there just isn't, there are?
Well, so we planned for the roof this year.
Okay, that's what I'm wondering, yeah, that's why, okay, the pre, the down payment or whatever, we did, yeah.
Oh, the rooftop unit.
Yes, yes, yes.
We know, we've already done all the roofs.
Yeah, no more leaky bucket, yeah.
The budget had the roof in it this year.
Correct.
But we did it last year, we pulled forward to make it through the areas.
Correct.
When we were looking at the official budget, that rooftop unit is still in this year's official budget, we just did it early.
Correct, okay.
And I think the, at the last meeting, you pulled the paving out of the maintenance line.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yep.
And so the other thing that I've included in here as well, is your calculated default budget, so the default budget is your current year budget, so the fiscal year twenty-four budget, plus minus any one-time expenses or mandatory expenses you did by law, um, or CBA driven, so, but how I've presented it here is the twenty-five default versus the twenty-five proposed, because when you go to the ballot, you don't see the current year budget, same as the increase in fifty-two, you're looking at the two numbers, you're looking at the default and the proposed, so this box in the middle is the difference, so what is in the proposed but not in the default is any non-CBA, um, salaries and benefits, are the first two lines, um, any changes in substitutes, which actually benefits us, because since our subline went down, the higher one was last year, so that's in the default, so that's why you see it's at a negative. Um, the increase in computers that we have and copiers and printers, the next one, um, this is the. The next one, um this is a one-time expense in the current year that I couldn't carry forward to the default. So like you were saying, why didn't the repair maintenance go down? It's because the rooftop unit is in the budget, but that's a one-time expenditure. So what I had to do is take the current year budget minus the hundred and nine thousand. So we do have an increase in for the proposed budget, but I had to take the current year minus hundred and nine to put in the default. Um safety and security supplies. And then first student, so first student, we have a multi-year contract, but even if it's a multi-year contract. It can't be in the default because it's not a contract that went on the ballot, like the CBA. Unless it was you can include it by law. So um you legally have to bus students, but you only have to legally bus students that live over a two-mile radius from the school. And so I would have to calculate all the bus resources anywhere possible to do. But I did do a heat, so I worked with Rusty Lester because we have a twenty thousand dollar increase on um fuel oil. I did include that in the default because I went back and pulled, it's actually in one of um. It's not, I think it was like not at three oh six, but at three twelve, I said it. The heating has to be within the state statute, so then I went back and pulled the state statute. And said, okay, the classrooms have to be between these temperatures.
They have to.
You have to have the. Did include that. And then the increase related to food service for escalation of food prices or. Our food service person are not union, so.
Okay.
So. This would be the difference between the two numbers that people see on the ballot.
Yep. And this is in this, you did a lot of good work behind the scenes because it's important because if our proposed budget doesn't pass. It goes to the default budget. We don't want it to have to be like a five hundred thousand dollar difference when we're scrambling. Okay.
Yeah, so that's exactly why typically we would just use the old field, but I was like, no, I'm gonna find this rule. Or I could find it and uh kind of piece it together today. So did anyone have any questions in the default?
No, this is great. Thank you.
And the only other thing that we had for you is just to cost out the um health insurance for paraprofessionals. So that sheet is right here that we did.
Oh, I have them.
So we did include that.
It's in the it's in the budget.
It's in the budget?
Yes, to opt to.
Sorry.
To offer um.
That's great.
So you see here that we just um great job by the business part department. They we calculated and thanks to Becky. Kind of looked at the staffing, who would want it or need it. So we calculated about four pairs taking it at seventy percent, so that's an increase of thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-nine cents. So as Molly said, it's in this budget, so.
Thing we took out is this twenty percent preschool.
And I don't think we need to. I think we shifted position that we, yeah, so I don't think we need to.
Yeah, so that kind of yeah.
So it's in the five and five point four percent increase includes that line item. I thought it wasn't in there.
For four people, so more than four people.
We're talking percentage, not very much.
And so we did do our due diligence, you know, majority of the para con that pairs that have uh CBAs. It's about seventy percent for where they start out for a single plan. So it's a couple a little bit higher. Uh it ranged anywhere from like it's what sixty-eight to eighty-five percent, but seventy was the was the most. I believe in our analysis when we looked at it.
Can they opt in anytime during the school year or do they?
There's certain times of the year, right?
Enrollment is in the summer, but then if you have like a qualifying event, if you get married or be or something happens. Um then you can join. Okay, so could potentially.
Age off your parents, is that include is that is that a qualifying event? Yeah.
Yes, and that's why in the current year I increased.
It's twenty-five, right? Is it twenty-five? Twenty-six, okay. This is great. This is. I'm so glad they're able to get this in. What's inflation at right now? Like four percentish?
A little over four.
Yeah.
Four and a half, right? It was the last number I saw.
Yeah.
Except for food. Food's like its own category.
It's like a four hundred percent, I swear to God. Maybe that's just in my household.
So um we can, obviously we have the public hearing coming up in January, so we'll get more input. But next time we come to you, also come with the warrant articles to look at. But just get a view of preview, keep this two articles that we've been working on with our trust funds. But also we're gonna make a recommendation to all of our districts to um ma- start a technology trust fund. So you saw in this budget, because of access points and wiring, has to go there. It's usually a five to six year uh timeline. If we are able to put a trust aside and put at least five to seven thousand dollars a year. You'll never see it in your budget. You'll be able to pull that out of that trust every five to six years. That would cover your switching, that would cover your cabling. Stuff that's usually one-time costs at a certain five to six years. So that's a recommendation from Mr. Hills for all of our schools. To put that together so that we save money in in anticipation to alleviate it from from future budgets. Any other questions on the budget? Any additions, subtractions, edits that you want us to have for our January meeting?
We have more aggressively tried to get incoming kindergarten numbers this year because I know we talked a lot about that last year. So we've reached out to all the preschools and um early intervention and. Just tries to get our finger on as many kids that we know of, so.
And I I just want to highlight, I I really appreciate the work Becky and Molly have done.
Yes.
To get this to this number. I mean, they have really looked at every dollar, every penny. Because we know the the situation in a lot of our towns with assessments and taxes, so. Um I I can't applaud them enough to getting this number where it's at. It was almost twice this when we started and we've really, really loved, so thank you.
More than twice this, actually.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, no, this is great. I mean, I think this is a budget I feel like we can solidly stand behind on many different, many different ways. I'm really pleased to see this and and this number, I don't think anyone can argue that, so.
Does it make sense to have that data so that we can demonstrate the hard work to take a look at every line item?
Oh, is which day the kindergarten data or just?
No, like if we're if we're saying it was more than double in reduction, like. We say it was, you know, twelve percent and we took a hard look and.
There's part of. Something when we started, I think, wasn't it?
We can go back to the first timeline when we pulled it out and we can then we can identify why what we took out and why. So we we could pull that justification cause you can do that for January.
I guess we don't need like, you know, the exact details, but it might be a nice talking point to just demonstrate to the public that.
I think that's a smart.
This is what we started out with and we got it down.
We're trying to be really mindful of.
Yeah.
Yeah, just the atmosphere and yeah, yeah, what's going on.
I did just want to come to the town the other day because that was calling and they did request um kind of where we're at. And I told them, I said, I can't speak until the school board meets. So they did ask if you mind if we could send them a draft after we meet tonight, so I told them I would have to ask.
Is that something we need to say yes or no to or?
Well, I mean, this is this is what we're gonna take to the public hearing.
I'm I'm happy with it, yeah.
I mean, sorry, I mean. Unless there's some ma- major change between now and.
Right, that happens, yeah. Right. Yeah, yes. Yes, right now it's public knowledge, right, yeah.
Kathy this file afterward and say this is what we.
Yeah. Yep.
I think the town might be at around six percent.
That's great. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Molly. And Becky, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Great. The more things get posted on Kensington and connects, the more sleep I lose, so this is great. So that takes us to new business.
I just want to update the board. So Dr. Aswell's been working with the Cooperative School District's Curriculum Philosophy Committee. To really look at our vision of a graduate. It's a little outdated because when we started that work now seven years ago. What we currently have posted, there's not anything about equity and diversity inclusion in that vision statement. We have our own for the DIJ work that we do, so that committee is really looking at uh how we can combine both um for our students. Um so they've been doing that work in late March, early April. Dates still do be determined. There will be a vision summit where we want to invite as many stakeholders as possible. So members of this board would be able to join, parents, faculty members to be able to give input. So we'll meet at stakeholder groups. There'll be a a very formal process. Usually it's about a four-hour process where we can take the work that they've done. Take a look at it, ask questions. Um so just when that date does come, put it on, put on your radar. The more people we have, the better.
Great.
And then we would like to make a calendar change or request um with the primary being announced for January twenty-third voting. And since they use the gymnasium here, we'd like to make a suggestion so that we don't have students in school while voting is occurring. That we take our March twenty-ninth date, which is a common PD date in the um in the all of our elementary schools and flip-flop them. So therefore, uh students would have January twenty-third off. Teachers would come here and do some professional development and exchange on March twenty-ninth, students that would come to school and that would be the exchange that we have. So no, nothing in uh required in in hours or days, but it's just swapping the days. So um we would need a formal motion for you to accept that. And that is a recommendation that we are asking for all of our elementary boards to happen since it is a common PD day in all of our districts.
I can make a motion to flip-flop March twenty-ninth and January twenty-third for professional development days.
One second.
All in favor?
Thank you all.
That was that second one, second bullet point, right? Old business, I don't see.
You don't have any?
Okay. Um people-related matters or personnel. Okay, so I have to make a motion. I haven't done this in a while to go into non-public. Under I at. Are we out of? Yes, six forty-seven.
Perfect, one second.
Thanks, Molly. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn at seven oh two. All right, all in favor?